Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. If we could get settled, we can begin with our prayer as always. Thank you. And we would begin with Joan. If you wouldn't mind, begin with our prayer. We welcome Joan, who is Chaplaincy Leader at Christ the King. Long drive in the snow, Joan. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. On this Advent evening, we remember in prayer Mary Elizabeth Podgorsky, daughter of Ed Podgorsky and Barbara Podgorsky, who are retired teachers from our board. This third week of Advent calls us to rejoice. The coming of Savior is near, but we are also called to reflect. Are we ready to receive Him? So let's begin in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. O mighty God, your promise of salvation fills us with joy and hope. We long for its fulfillment in our own time. Hear the cries of your people and let your justice be evident in our world, that we and all people may have ever new reasons to rejoice in your love.
A reading from the prophet Jeremiah. "The days are surely coming," says the Lord, "when I will fulfill the promise I made to the house of Israel and the house of Judah. In those days and at that time, I will cause a righteous branch to spring up from David, and he shall execute justice and righteousness in the land. In those days Judah will be saved and Jerusalem will live in safety. And this is the name by which he will be called: The Lord is our righteousness." The word of the Lord. Thanks be to God.
Oscar Romero once said, "No one can celebrate a genuine Christmas without being truly poor." The self-sufficient, the proud, those who, because they have everything, look down on others, those who have no need even of God, for them there will be no Christmas. Only the poor, the hungry, those who need someone to come on their behalf will have that someone. That someone is God, Emmanuel, God with us. Without poverty of spirit, there can be no abundance of God. Romero is not speaking here about financial poverty, but about emptying ourselves so that we can be filled with Christ who will come.
Oh God, you joyfully embrace humanity for our sake. With gratitude, we pray.
Come, Christ our Savior.
You come into the world to bring justice and peace. Come, Christ our Savior. You come in the midst of contradiction and pain.
You come as one who is with us, our Emmanuel.
May we be with and for one another in a spirit of solidarity and love, and may justice and peace in our world be the fruits of justice and peace in our hearts. Oh God, your will is justice for the poor and peace for the afflicted. May the news of the dawn of your coming cut through our hardened hearts. As your son Jesus comes baptizing with the fire of the Spirit, may our complacency give way to conversion. May we be with and for one another in a spirit of solidarity and love with all God's people. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you very much, Joan. Appreciate this lovely... Thank you. A reminder, as the signage indicates, that tonight's board meeting is being video and voice recorded and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. So we welcome you all here this evening. We have to do just a little bit of housekeeping and then we can get into the presentation, which is very exciting.
Yes, just there is a small human resources activity report. That is Gino Montanari, appointed as acting elementary principal effective January 6, 2014. Paul Thompson, appointed as acting secondary vice principal for the period January 6 to January 31, 2014.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. The approval of the agenda. No additions to the agenda. Trustee Vienna making the motion. A second, please, trustee Marai. Any questions to the agenda? No? All in favor? Thank you. Declarations of conflict of interest? None? Thank you. And now we come to our presentations. So, Madam Director.
Through you, Madam Chair, I'd like to thank you for your assistance with this and call upon Lisa Stacco to talk to us about this initiative that we had during this season of Advent.
I'll start over. Thank you again for the opportunity to share with you some information about our board's Keeping Christ in Christmas contest for students. As a Catholic education system with a focus on achieving, believing, and belonging, part of the purpose in organizing the contest was to build community and to promote engagement and conversation with students, parents, and members of our community to... around a positive and uplifting theme, the true meaning of Christmas, while also showcasing the talents and abilities of our students. We invited current Halton Catholic Elementary and Secondary School students to submit original artwork that would best describe the theme of the contest, which was launched on November 5 and closed on November 18. A judging panel reviewed all of the submissions and selected eight elementary and eight secondary finalists to be part of the online voting process through the period of one week at the end of November. Before asking our two talented students to come forward and be recognized, I would like to express our sincere appreciation to all of the students, parents, and members of our community who took part in the contest. I would also like to offer a special note of appreciation and thanks to the Halton Oefta Elementary and Secondary Associations for sponsoring the contest through their generous donation of two iPads for the student recipients. We received well over 300 submissions from students across our system. In honor of their hard work and talents, we decided to display all of the artwork here in our boardroom and throughout our Catholic Education Center, so you can see it here all before you, as well as through a video on our board's YouTube channel. Please take a moment to enjoy their work. You'll find the link to the video on the homepage of our board's website. I would now like to invite Lorraine Beraldo Turner of our Oefta Secondary Unit and Nina March of our Elementary Unit of Oefta to say a few words.
I'm just thinking I can use my teacher voice, if that's okay. As a secondary teacher, it was truly humbling to see the talent that our school kids have. This is both in the elementary and secondary panel. Walking around trying to make a decision was very difficult, but obviously we had to narrow it down. And we are so pleased and honored to have been asked to participate in this on behalf of our secondary teachers. Thank you.
As an elementary teacher, one of the focuses that we have is relating with our students. And I think one of our greatest blessings is sharing that faith with our students and having our students share their faith with us. We learn every day about Catholicity from our students, and it is a real joy. When we were looking at all of the beautiful artwork that was sent in by the students...
Thank you very much. We have to congratulate our students and thank them for their diligence and the creativity and their talents. And we also have to thank Oefta Elementary and Secondary for their contribution of... and a gift of an award to the students. So, thank you very much. I really appreciated you being here. We will give you a moment if you wish to leave, but if you wish to stay for the evening, then we're happy with that, too. So, it's your decision. But thank you so much, and we wish you a blessed Christmas. Thank you. Thank you. Rick? Rick, you want to dismiss? You want to dismiss? Merry Christmas. It's please. The regular minutes of December 3. Could I have a mover? Madam Vice Chair, thank you, seconded by trustee Rowe. Thank you. Any questions to the minutes? All in favor? Thank you. Business from previous meetings, it's on page 10. Any questions to that? Thank you. Action items. Trustee Morrison is unavailable, could not be here with us tonight. So, we will go through this. And you have it in front of you, item 8.1. Be kind to me in your questions, because I'm not trustee Morrison. Results that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve Policy 1-41, "Respectful Workplace at First Reading." Do we have a mover? Trustee Marai, second. Trustee Vienna, you second? Okay. All right. So, we've got it on the table. So trustee Vienna, you have a question? Please?
It's on page 2. Engage in a course of vexatious comment. Page 2, right up to the second... I'll say the first ballot. I wish if this could be... We use the word vexatious on commas and use a word more explanation, because I figure we're doing this for the good of everybody, but we have a group... Let's see. We have a group working with us. They don't know what that means. I would say over 95%. Then, after they going to have commented, "I'm sorry, I don't know what that means." Might as well we focus on their own language. And I was talking with Mrs. Cipriana, if she could make this amendment.
All right. So we need to replace that with another word. That is your concern?
Yeah.
An upsetting comment, is that what we...
No, it's not upsetting. It's a more vulgar word. Everyday word.
A common word, yes. Yes. Do we have suggestions? Curriculum Department. Do we have a replacement? Sorry. I'm glad you're still thinking of me, Madam Chair. The front of all knowledge for the board. Go ahead. No? Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair. Vexatious, we could replace it with bothersome, irritation, troublesome, annoying. Those are all synonyms for vexatious. They do describe the word. I believe that... But I also did want to clarify, should have been highlighted that we did also replace... Sorry, we added the addition to the first bullet under Principles that was the intention... Reflects the intentions of the Policy Committee, your discussions this past... at our past Policy Committee, as well as, I hope we've corrected all of the spelling and the Canadianization of those words. Sure. Through you, Madam Chair. Bothersome, irritants, annoyance, disturbing, harassing. Harassing is a synonym, however, we do have a harassment policy as well. So I'm just concerned that they... We also have pestering, provocative, tiresome, troublesome, wear some...
Troublesome be acceptable? It's common use?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know this, you know. How do we even know this kind of language? Then we're going to lose the vote, you know what I mean?
All right. Well, this is going out in first reading, so it's going out to the system. Madam Vice Chair? What is the will of the board? We have troublesome, we have insulting. Please don't send it back to policy. We're going to go out for first reading, hopefully. So is there a replacement word? Or do you wish it to go out as is, with vexatious, and see if it comes back? Troublesome? Okay. All right. Okay. We generally agreed that we're going to replace that vexatious with the word troublesome, and this is first reading only. All right? So we're all okay with that? Are there any other questions? Okay, Ed? Are there any other questions or comments pertaining to... So now we have Mr. Superintendent McMahon on the draft audited financial statements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Audit Committee meeting... At the Audit Committee meeting, immediately prior to this meeting, the Audit Committee approved the 2012-13 draft audited financial statements for submission to the board. Roxanna did a presentation for the Audit Committee, and we thought we would do that for the entire board. And we have Janet Allen, our audit partner from KPMG present as well. So Roxanna's going to do a... She had a dry run at the Audit Committee, so another run through it. We'll try to move it along. And so, for the benefit of the rest of the trustees, we thought we'd bring it forward here, too. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to walk you through a few slides that explain a little bit the numbers in the financial statements. Similar to the format of the previous year's presentation, we start off with an outline of the financial statements. The first reports are the statements of management responsibility and the auditors' reports, which are standard reports outlining the responsibilities of management and independent auditor in the preparation of the financial statements, followed by the statement of financial position, which is essentially the balance sheet, and the statement of operations. These are the key statements that I will walk you through this evening. The statement of change in net debt and the statement of cash flows show just the changes from the prior year that are outlined in the previous statements. And through the slides, we have references for the notes as they pertain to the items being discussed, so we'll walk you through the entire package. On the financial statements, page 4 is the consolidated statements of financial position, which shows what... Pardon me? Of the financial statements, the actual consolidated financial statement package. Yes?
Sorry, Madam Chair. If I may, it might be useful if the trustees did have their financial statements open, which is the report. Roxanna will be referring to the page numbers. She is on... Right now on slide... On slide...
Slide 3.
3. So... But she's referring to page 4 in the draft audited financial statements, which is the statement of financial position.
All right. The consolidated statements of financial position shows what we own, what are our assets and what we owe, so what are the liabilities incurred, and the overall accumulated surplus of the board. We're going to be looking at the current year balances as they compare to last year's balances as we go through the next few slides. The first item you'll notice on this page 4 of the draft financial statement is the cash and cash equivalents, which are comparable year to year at the balance of 2.8 million, mostly as a result of the balancing school-generated funds. Accounts receivable, which are broken down in Note 3, have a balance of approximately 16.7 million. And we've broken down the main items, the biggest one being 10 million for property taxes and EVC revenue receivable from the municipalities. Note 4, and Note 4 is on page... On page 13 of the packet, of the draft audited financial statements, explain the long-term receivable from the ministry, the 218 million, which is slightly higher from last year. And this receivable increases as we build schools and will decrease as we pay off the debentures associated with those... Pay for those schools. Temporary borrowing, which can be found in Note 5 to the financials on the same page, 13, have gone up from the previous year by approximately 30 million, mostly as a result of the additional new schools that we're starting, the Milton 5 and 7 elementary schools. So there is additional capital loans this year compared to last year's, as well as remaining loans on the construction of Jean Vanier and Saint Ignatius of Loyola Secondary Schools. And that's what makes up the balance for approximately 102 million in temporary borrowing. Accounts payable and accrued liabilities. There is 17.9 million made up mostly from capital payable, capital evictions outstanding, with, in part, related to Jean Vanier and Saint Anne, which were the bigger expenditures incurred through 2012-13 year. And there are other accrued liabilities in this amount, such as payroll liabilities, accrued interest. Deferred revenue can be found... A breakdown of it on Note 6 of the financials, which is on page 14 of the audited financial statements. And you will notice that the balance has decreased by approximately 7 million, mostly as a result of using proceeds of disposition and school renewal on the construction of Jean Vanier, which shows the movement in deferred revenue. Note 7 gives a bit of a background on retirement and employee future benefits, some of the changes that occurred through the year. We have completed a full actuarial evaluation again this year, which has resulted in additional planned curtailments and changes in the liability as a result of different factors, such as changes in discount rates. So there's been 1.4 million decrease in this liability over the 11-12 year. There's five identified employee future benefits, future benefits. Retirement gratuity, which is a death gratuity. The post-retirement benefit, both of these are being amortized this year, as well as the WSIB and long-term disability benefits that are being brought into compliance over the next four years, so 25% per year. And compensated absences to account for the top-up of sick days for 12-13. This is the... Due to the current year as not being amortized. And there has been funding from the ministry for this amount. Net debenture, so net debt, is listed in Note 8, which is on page 18. And you'll notice there's a 10 million difference from the prior year. Mostly it's a result of not debenturing this year, which would increase this balance. And we paid some debentures and we paid off the turf loan for the artificial... Which offset the cost for the artificial turf installed on certain schools. And that's the... Those are the main drivers for the decrease in the net debt balance from the prior year. Deferred contributions are listed in Note 9, which are on page 20. And they... The deferred capital contributions is essentially a source of revenue set aside to offset the depreciation of tangible capital assets, which we talk about in the next slide. It's... There's an increase of about 30 million from the prior year as a result of the capital expenditures that we've incurred, mostly as we completed Jean Vanier and Saint Anne through the year. I would like to draw your attention on the numbers at the bottom of the slide where we show the depreciation of the tangible capital assets over the amortization of this source of revenue set aside, which we call deferred capital contributions, being 1.8 million. And that's due to what the ministry would call the unsupportive capital. So the board is using the other revenue sources, such as, for example, proceeds of disposition or reserves to fund proportion of the capital projects. And that is the difference between the two, which will be reflected in the accumulated surplus that we'll talk in a few minutes. Tangible capital assets are broken down on Note 10, which is on... which is on page twenty-one of the audited financial, draft financial statements, and shows the movement between the opening balance and ending balance, any additions and disposals and amortization incurred through the year. It includes both land and land improvement as well as construction in progress and the buildings that are being amortized. So that schedule outlines the entire tangible capital assets of the board. Slide twelve outlines, and the next couple of slides, they outline the accumulated surplus of the board. We start off with the non-designated surplus, the operating surplus. We had an opening balance as of September first, 2012 of approximately 600,000, an in-year movement of approximately 473. And we ended up with an accumulated operating surplus of approximately a million dollars. To this, we add any amounts that are restricted for future use by the board, such as rollover of school budgets, student success, any reserves that are committed for certain, for specifically intended purposes, which you'll see a committed capital project for 7.1 million. And I apologize, I know it's a little bit hard to see. I do have some handouts if anyone requires to, to see a little bit better. So if you want to pass them around. It's a bit small from, up on the slide. And these committed capital projects, the 7.1 million, for example, is what the board has to put aside for that unsupportive capital contribution that I mentioned before to, as an offsetting source of revenue for the amortization of the tangible capital assets. That remaining 1.8 million, so that, this offsets a portion of that. So the total accumulated surplus available for compliance had a $758,000 in-year change and we have 15.7 million available for compliance, which means we can draw on these funds need be, with some restrictions for those amounts that are listed under the restricted use. The amounts to be recovered, the employee future benefits and interest accrual, they're actuarial, they are offset by the actual amounts recorded as liabilities that we've already went through in terms of the accrued interest and in the accounts payable and accrued liability slide and the employee benefits that I walked you through. And the school-generated funds is the balance remaining at the end of the year, so approximately 3.3 million unspent, as well as 72 million represents the revenues, the revenues that we have received for land purchases to date, which are received over a period of 15 years. So today we have received about 72 million. This gives us an accumulated surplus of 82.3 million roughly, with a change in year of 6.3 million. And now I'll flip to the Statement of Operations, which is on page five of the draft financial statements, and walk you through the, a comparison of the revenues and expenditures, both from original budget as well as from the prior year. The overall revenues have increased by 5.3 million from the original budget and the main ticket items would include an increase in school-generated funds revenue by 2.5 million, which have an offsetting expenditure. 1.9 million increase in other provincial grants, which are due to announcements made later in the year. There's additional grants of approximately 750,000 and 1.5 million in other revenue as I listed on the slide. As compared to the prior year financial statement, there's 4.5 million increase in revenues. Mainly, there's been a 2.1 million increase in the grants for student needs as a result of increased enrollment, as a result of the labor enhancements and opening an additional school, St. Mary's. There's been 5 million additional funding in other provincial grants, mainly as a result in an increase in the FDK program grants. Other revenues have decreased through the year as a result of less EDC revenue being collected. And now for a comparison for the expenditures as they relate to the original budget, you'll notice a 1.7 million difference. So the actual expenditures are 1.7 million more than the budget, but we need to factor in the decrease in employee future benefits of 1.4 as a result of curtailment from the actual valuation. When we put the two together, as they go in different directions, we actually have a 3.1 million increase in expenditures from the original budget. And it's mostly the offsetting expenditures, as I mentioned before, from the additional revenue in school-generated funds, additional enrollment, which means more instruction costs, and the increase, the increase in other provincial grants which have corresponding expenditure. The comparison to the prior year, you'll notice that the difference is 37.1 million increase in expenditures. And now we need to factor in the prior year curtailment of the plan of 31.8 million. So we actually end up with a 5.3 million change in expenditures from the prior year. Similarly with the previous slide, it's due to increased enrollment, increased expenditures on school operations and maintenance and repayment of the ventures. Administration expenditures have remained mostly the same. Although you'll notice from an accounting perspective, from a PISA perspective, there is a 1.2 million difference. That relates back to the, the curtailment of 31.8. A proportion of that has been adjusted, has adjusted the administration expenditures last year. So it actually has brought it down by 1.2 million. If you net that change, they're actually comparable from year to year. They're within about $10,000. The annual surplus that I've mentioned on Slide Twelve, the 6.3 million that we have on the bottom line, the change in year, is made up mostly the change in employee future benefits, both in terms of the actual gain and amortization recorded for the year, the decrease in EDC revenue with no corresponding expenditures, and a surplus in school-generated funds. The 6.3 million, as I mentioned on those previous slides, it's partially prescriptive, so we, we need to use, the EDC land has to be allocated to revenue recognized for land, for example. Any restricted funds have to be used for the intended use. Some amount is at the discretion of the board, such as the permits on community use of schools or artificial turf, which could be allocated to offset the cost for the turf loan, for example, that we incurred in, while we were putting in the artificial turf in some of our schools. So that amount would be at the discretion of the board on how it should be allocated. And to tie them all together, the Statement of Operations, which shows the prior year accumulated surplus plus the current year, is the total accumulated surplus that is on the Statement of Operations, which is in, which is on, on page five, plus the non-designated surplus, which is the operating surplus available at the end of the year of 1 million, gives us the 82.6 million cumulative accumulated surplus. And these numbers, we've already walked you through in the previous Slide Twelve to Fourteen, I believe they were, in terms of the restricted amounts and amounts to be recovered for employee benefits in the school-generated funds, for example. Any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you very much. We need a motion. What page is the motion on? How many pages in that thing? What do you mean, page? Page forty if you use the package numbering system. Resolved that the board approved the attached 2012-2013 draft audited financial statements. Amuba, Trustee Rose, seconded by Trustee Marai. Any questions? All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you Roxanna, thank you Stacy. Thank you to our consultants. Thank you. Roxanna, I'm sorry, I'm getting older. So eight point three?
Thank you, thank you Madam Chair. This is our revised budget estimates for the 13-14 year. They are marked preliminary for the reason that we are still waiting, as indicated on page two of the report, the second page of the report. We're still waiting for hopefully about $900,000 to do with the labor enhancements. I'll draw your attention to the top of page three, which puts both the year-end that we just, Roxanna just walked through and the revised, the revised budget estimates that are before you. So in the, in the 12-13 year, we actually, in the revised budget estimates for 12-13, we expected a $1 million shortfall. The financials actually came in at about 800,000 positive. So that was a 1.8 million dollar swing to the, to the good. In 13-14, right now preliminarily, we show a 1.5 million dollar shortfall. So the net effect of those two years is 300,000, as is indicated in that chart. So it's actually, we're in, actually cumulatively, when you put the two years together, we're actually in a better position than we had originally expected. We, we are aware that trustees want a balanced budget and senior staff is currently reviewing the numbers. And, and as is indicated in the conclusion, there are five things among others that we're, we've begun to look at. We've actually found a few minor items right, right away from senior staff after we met yesterday on this. And when we get the, hopefully, well, as it says, pardon me, on the second page of the report, the ministry hopes to complete the files on the labor adjustments by the end of the calendar year. So we'll hear about that sometime in January. And we hope to bring back a revised budget, an update report at the January 21st Board Meeting. Hopefully we'll have heard from the ministry by then. And senior staff will have met to, to have undertaken some of the analyses referred to in the report. And with our intention to, to bring the, bring the revised budget into balance, Madam Chair, and I'd be happy to answer any questions trustees may have, or Roxanna, or anyone from senior staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Paul or Roxanna? No questions, thank you. We have a resolution, page six on the Business Department's report, page seventy-four on your package, as a resolution. Resolved that the board approved the 2013-14 revised budget estimates preliminary in the amount of 334,78,227. Allison, you moving that? Thank you. That is Trustee Lemay moving it, Trustee Vienna seconding it. All in favor? Thank you very much. Lot of work. Moving along now to no staff reports, information items. Student trustee update, and Jason is going to take that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Student Senate is bringing, is beginning to plan the annual conference in May, building on our Give Respect, Get Respect campaign. We're looking at possible speakers. And Erica, Maria, and I will be looking at all options. We're also looking into starting an elementary student senate. We're not sure if that will start this year or next year or possibly just introducing small amounts of students into our larger student senate that we have right now. In addition, we'll be hearing presentations from our senators in future meetings about further improving the quality of education in our schools. We would like to wish everyone at the Board a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we look forward to working with you in 2014. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Jason. Any, anything to add from the ladies? No? Trustee Erica, trustee Maria? Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for our student trustees? Well, we look forward to working with you too. It's an absolute pleasure to have you. Thank you. Superintendent Nah, ten point two, School Educational Field Trips.
Sure, the report is there before you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions on the School Educational Field Trips? No, thank you. Ten point three, System-Wide Faith Day Update, Superintendent Nah.
Thank you. I'm, I'm happy to share with you a report that's before you on a follow-up for our system faith day. And I would have brought popcorn, but there is a lot of chocolate flying around the room tonight. But at the end of the presentation as well, we have some video clips from the day for you to see. So the report outlines the purpose behind us gathering as an entire staff for our faith day, and that is to celebrate our Catholic education in Halton, reflect on our Catholic identity as the foundation of our system, deepen our understanding of our mission and re-energizing all of our staff in that mission. And it was important to ensure that all staff can see themselves and their important contributions that they make to this mission in our Board. And so that's, that's why it was so important that we gathered together as an entire system. We know that our staff is our most valuable asset. The timing for faith day as well served as both a culminating day and a lead into a new beginning. It served to bring about a culmination of all of the work that we've done over the course of the past few years on supporting staff in knowing, understanding, and articulating our distinctiveness as a Catholic system and in the work done throughout the year of faith. As well, it served as a day to launch our new theological theme that will carry us through the next three years. It also happened to be a good time for our director to meet all of our staff. Some of the key messages that came from the day included the dedication and the commitment and the hard work of all of our staff as we continue the work of Catholic education and every staff member's roles were recognized. That we all have a story and when Christ is central to that, that we understand it and we live it and we pass it along to our students. That we have a collective understanding that we are a community of faith and we're here to nurture our students, but as well to be nurtured and to nurture one another. All of these messages came through that day from various people. You would have thought we all talked to each other before they, they got up to speak, but from our bishop, from our Chair of the Board, from our Director, and from Dr. Groom. A lot of thanks and gratitude goes out to the Working Committee. This consisted of close to 50 very hard-working people that put a lot of time and effort into the day, but it's most importantly, they put a lot of love into the plan of the day. They met on a monthly basis for a year and a half and the various subcommittees met as needed throughout the planning stages. Our choir as well practiced diligently for three months on a weekly basis and Corpus Christi School hosted all of the practices and all of the equipment as we moved through in our planning. So a big thank you to them. And just know that Lorian is working on trying to keep the choir together so that we have a Board Choir. Schools got invited, or got involved by providing video clips that were shown throughout the day to give the big picture of who we all are in our sites across the system. And as well, the students created the beautiful banners to represent their sites to make the venue the home for the day. And we are trying to pull together some plans for those banners. So our next steps include continuing that conversation that was started that day for all of our staff at all of our sites and for our parents'. And I'll let the video check through. And I'll let the video take through.
Thank you very much to the organizers of this wonderful gathering, the kindness of providing these great dismounts with you. This is a very important action for offering thanks. God, you have provided in the first reading that we hold in these late terms, these long weeks of hours, that one day will return to us. We hold a great treasure, Jesus Christ. He makes us who we are. He gives us what we do. He guides us as we do it.
I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. We do have about a forty minute video that has the longer clips. You just got the nine minute version tonight. But that will be on our staff net, and we'll email you the link to it so that if you want to see more of the day. I have the longer, the whole day clip as well, but it's pretty long. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Lauren. Any questions for superintendent Nah? It's a wonderful day for all those who attended. And you can see from the package the number of people that were involved in putting this day together. So it was a formidable achievement. Thank you very much to the committee and to the leaders of that committee. Thank you. And now we are going to talk about ten point four, From Great to Excellent, the next phase of Ontario's Education Strategy Consultation. Assistant Superintendent Negra.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to present the report on the five consultation sessions that we all participated in with regard to the ministry's consultation on the next phase of Ontario's education system. I think you'll see a huge breadth of ideas there that will give our ministry some good advice moving forward in terms of what the priorities will be. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Trustee Marae?
Do we have information on their, the ministry's consultation they did online? Do we have information on how many attended that? I know it was on one of the nights that we were doing it in Oakville in Burlington. But I am curious to see the input and how many participated actually from an online perspective. Because obviously, we've been discussing different ways we can engage parents as well.
Happy to follow up on that and get whatever information I can from that online consultation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This report is an update based on the year end. We brought a preliminary report forward in September. It now has the year end numbers in it. And we brought the actual expenditures up to the end of November. I should have mentioned under, we did the same thing under item eight point three, the revised budget estimates. We compared those to the expenditures in the first quarter of the board's fiscal year to the end of November as well. And as Roxana referred to in her presentation, where we'll be seeking the venture funding of thirty six, almost thirty seven million for the four projects indicated. And myself, Roxana, be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have five reports before you this evening. The first one would be John Vanier, and this is also our final report. You'll see in the photos that the seasonal dome has been installed by the town, and it is fully operational. The field house should be completed by the end of this week. And in the spring, we'll be able to complete our running track. And then there'll be just minor deficiencies and commissioning of the equipment that'll go throughout the year. Similarly, the St. Anne report is the final report. There are some minor items to complete in the school, and the ongoing commissioning will occur. We have the Milton five and Milton seven reports there. The weather has really been not kind to us this past month. And you can see by some of the photos of the snow that we've had to deal with. But we're still hoping to be on track for the opening for September. And similarly, the full day kindergarten projects at Guardian Angels and St. Anthony are shown in those reports. I would be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Corbaccio? Thank you very much. So correspondence, there you'll have a copy of the letter, the joint letter that was sent by us, by the Halton District Board and the city of Burlington, to the region of Halton, asking them to consider slowing the traffic down over the Highway five in between Sutton and Walker's Line. Those of us that attended the meeting with the city of Burlington and Halton District about a month or so ago, this was one of the topics that we talked about. And I think that I did mention it to you at a previous meeting that we were going to do this. So when we hear back, you will of course be notified. Any questions to that? Do we have any open question, period questions, Danielle? No? Okay, we don't have to go back in camera. So we need a resolution to excuse absentees. So we have to excuse trustee Morrison, trustee Vienna, thank you. Trustee Marae seconded, all in favor? Thank you. So now we need the adjournment, and then we will ask trustee Jason to give us a closing prayer. Moving adjournment, trustee Vienna, seconded, trustee Rowe, all in favor? Thank you. And could we ask the trustee Jason to do the closing prayer?
Okay, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Loving God, help us remember the birth of Jesus that we may share in the song of the angels, the gladness of the shepherds and worship of wise men. Close the door of hate and open the door of love all over the world. Let kindness come with every gift and good desires with every greeting. Deliver us from every evil by the blessing which Christ brings, and teach us to be merry with clear hearts. May Christmas morning make us happy, make us happy to be thy children, and Christmas evening bring us to our beds grateful thoughts, forgiving and forgiven for Jesus's sake, amen.
Thank you, Jason. Very good. On behalf of Madam Vice Chair, Arlene and I would like to thank you for all your work on behalf of Catholic education, and to wish you all a most blessed Christmas. If you're traveling, please be safe. And we look forward to seeing you in the new year. Do you have anything to add, Arlene?
Dear brothers and sisters, please, that you drink down bread. Happy holiday. May God be with you every second of it.
Thank you very much. Good night.